Hold on. All right, I will call this town board working session to order for Thursday, January 18th at 6 o'clock. Statement of public notice.
Hereby provided are written notice and the agenda of the public meeting as stated below. There's an opportunity for public comment as noted on the agenda upon recognition by the presiding officer.
And roll call, everybody is here and online. I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Opposed, it passes, and we will stand here for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To those of you who are online, Bruce does have plans that he's emailing to us. And when he does, we will get them to you. Meanwhile, Bruce, do you, if you press the button on those, and that one's sitting on paper plate, because unfortunately, I don't have enough, another stand, if you want to introduce who you have with you.
Good evening, everybody. Bruce Paulsen here from Sandec. We've got Mike Fitzpatrick, engineer with the scene they need to talk about, the power, data, lights, and cameras, and action.
And action, okay. Welcome, Mike. Glad that you're here. We also have Tim Whiteside online, who is our IT provider here for the town. And he does all our work for technology. Matt Moore is a member of the board, and so is Justin. So if you see them up there, that's them. Oh, we have a problem over there. There we go. So Matt's up there. And Tim is in the truck. That's why I can see, barely see him. He's dark. All right. So a couple of things I just wanted to mention quickly is I did talk to the DNR today. And we can go up to the line of the Knowles Nelson land. We just can't cross over it. So the building itself does not need a setback. The building can go just up to it. She's going to provide me with documentation to that. It's going to be another week or so before I get it from her. But she said that Knowles Nelson grant is different than the one in the preserve. So she will get that for us, but she said, thank you for asking. It does not, you can go right up to the edge of it. Not a problem. So I'm just letting everyone know. That's the verbal answer I finally got today after a week of waiting. So that's good.
To that point, is she our contact for that property or only in this, for this question?
Well, she's in the Northwest region. But our paperwork is in Eau Claire. Well, for her, that's important because she can't access everything on this. She can see it online. But she's going to get the actual paperwork from Eau Claire. They're going to have to pull the files so that she can review them and give us something in writing. But she told me today, just know, based on the year of that Knowles Nelson, you can go up to the edge of the land. You cannot cross over it.
So I don't know if that's Beth or who you're talking to, but my question.
You have to turn your mic on if you're gonna.
My question is, is she our contact for that piece of property? For any questions that we have regarding that property, or is it only pertaining to this, to the question regarding the property line?
No, she's the contact for that Knowles Nelson grant on that property at this time.
Are you saying?
Well, I'm saying it can change because.
Of course, it can change.
They're banging, they're running stuff around. So right now, she is our contact.
So if there were additional questions regarding that property, would she be the primary?
Yeah, I would contact her, yeah.
And we have to go through you to talk to her?
No, I can get you her information. It's at home. I don't have it with me. I just have her phone number.
Yeah, the phone number will work too.
But I'm waiting for her to send me something in writing.
I know. I have other questions and I'll just reach out to her base. I knew that we were in the Northwest thing, so I'll look it up.
So what other questions do you have based on this building for that to be there?
Nothing. That's why I'm not going to discuss it.
Oh, okay. I thought it had to do with the building. All right, okay. I'm going to turn it over to you, Bruce. He's still trying to email.
It's a big file. It'll probably take forever.
I know.
Did you see my? Did you see my woodwork one? I'd like to forward that to Bruce also. Teresa?
That's her. She can forward.
Oh, you will? Good, thank you. I didn't include him. I didn't know if I was supposed to, and I didn't even think of it at the time I sent the email.
Okay, so you sent these specs to us just based on lighting issues that we're going to talk about tonight? Do you want to start there? You want to start somewhere else? Or I should, before you go that far, let me ask Tim. Tim Whiteside, how much time do you have to spend with us tonight?
Well, I had to hit the road, obviously, so I'll be here for the duration.
Oh, okay. That's fine then. So where do you want to start?
Let's start with the power and data.
Okay, power and data.
Do our two, do our two towns that are online, do they need any of this paperwork?
She's taking care of it. He already sent it. So she's doing it.
I'm gonna yep him.
It takes a while. Go ahead, Bruce. You can start.
Just so you know, I can't really hear Bruce very well.
Yeah, you gotta grab the mic. We're going to make him take the mic, so he's gonna, you gotta hold it about this far away, Bruce. There you go.
All right, can you hear me?
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, I, yeah, I can hear you now.
All right. So the plan in the open office is that each one of the workstations, we're going to provide a quad power outlet and a data outlet that should have two connections for data and phone.
Got it.
That seem reasonable? Do you need more than four receptacles at the workstation?
Do you need more than? Four, four power plugs.
No, I don't. Are you trying to avoid surge strips? Is that why you're putting four, a fourplex there?
Correct.
Yeah, get your mic.
So will the, will those outlets in the wall then be surge protected professionally?
Yeah, what we'll plan on doing is doing a surge protection in the panel. And then we'll have one, one of the duplex and a quad would be an isolated ground. That would be orange or have an orange triangle for the computer, and the other would be a non-isolated ground for whatever else is plugged in at the workstations.
Oh, very nice.
So I would expect you'd still have surge protectors if you have more than, you know, two things you want on isolated ground and more than two things you want on the non-isolated ground.
Okay.
So is each station?
Yeah, I get up to your microphone because Tim can't hear you.
Is each station going to have one duplex and one quad?
No.
They'll have one quad, so it'll be.
Four, that's four.
At each workstation. And then it'll have the data that'll have two connections.
And we, and that's all they have for plugins is four outlets and then their data one?
That's what we show right now, and that gives the question, do you need more than four at a workstation to plug in? And so those will be, you know, all of this is going to be surge protected back at panel. As Mike indicated, one of these is going to be a dedicated for being able to plug your computer into. And then if you do need to run more, you can certainly plug a surge protecting strip into that if you need.
Yep.
Charging your phone or.
That's what we did at Hudson, is we have our computers plugged directly into that surge protected one in the wall. And we have another strip for, you know, my adding machine and, you know, all this other paraphernalia that you have at your desks.
So we're not going to put any standard dup, just duplex outlets in there, or?
There are fours.
A quad is just two duplex side by side.
They're nothing special. They're just a quad, so that's.
No, they're surge protected.
Right.
So when we get all finished with this, if they need another outlet, we're going to go out and buy strip things and run off of that for the, everything else.
And that's why.
Typically, the desks, a lot of times get pushed up against where the outlets are, where the computers are. So a lot of the time, you end up getting surge protectors anyway, because a lot of them come with very flat surface plugs. So you don't have your desk sticking out from the wall, you know, a couple inches to accommodate a regular PC power plug sticking out of the wall.
I'm not worried, I'm not worried about the surge protectors. I'm worried about that we're going to have, get all done and they're, and we have to go and buy a strip outlet because they don't have enough plugins that are just regular plugins for regular things. Kind of like your kitchen at home.
Well, all you need for outlets is the one for the computer, the one for the adding machine, and the one for a printer if you have one at your desk. That's the only ones you need.
Monitor. Now, you, you got two monitors.
Oh, the two monitors. I'm sorry.
No, you have a whole bunch. I have more than that at home.
Five. But I don't, but we don't have printers at the desk.
I don't either.
And we can certainly provide two quads.
Yeah, I, I, I think you should stick with surge strips myself rather than doing it with wall outlets.
Yep, I agree.
So why would we stick with that?
Of right. Go ahead.
Yeah, because even though they may have surge protection back at the fuse box, it, it doesn't cover the fact that when you're plugging into the wall, you have an outlet, you've got a cord that's going to be sticking out a couple of inches.
That's right.
And when you use a surge strip, if you've seen those, they're flat. They're no thicker than your, than your finger.
Yeah.
So they, they allow the desk to go right up against the wall. Also, a lot of the time, if it's really a crucial system, we're not, we're going to be using a UPS.
Right.
On most of those. So it's kind of redundant because we're probably already going to have some kind of an uninterruptible power supply to protect the system from brownouts and power glitches and everything else that wreaks havoc on them.
Yep.
Can I chime in here?
Sure.
So as I'm, as I'm listening to this, I, I don't see the harm in putting in the quad outlets with surge protection, right? I understand Tim's point. And we, there's nothing in this request that states we couldn't still use something like a UPS at the desk. Realistically, the other biggest benefit to this by using a UPS or a mid to upper tier surge protector is if it's proved that the surge protector goes faulty, you have a warranty claim with whoever manufactures your surge protector, right? So I don't see the harm in having these be quad receptacles. I agree, each desk should get two data links, one for the phone, one for the machine. I don't like the daisy chaining a phone and a desktop together. But, you know, I don't see the harm in the surge protector. And then if, if we want to, we just go get the UPS or the insured power strip. I mean, I can't imagine that the cost difference is monumental to make that one room set of breakers grounded.
So was it?
Yeah, I agree. I agree with everything that was just said.
Okay. What's the cost to keep adding these quad outlets? What do you think they cost per outlet? Do you have any idea?
Usually it's about $250.
Okay.
So it's not a lot. The circuiting, you, what we do is the orange outlets or the computer outlets would be on a dedicated circuit. So we have four computer outlets per circuit. And then up to 10 other outlets. So we're not really looking at additional breaker space, especially if we're looking at, say, one workstation having four computer outlets instead of two computer outlets. If it has the same code, it just has more wall plugins.
Is this, are these just double gang boxes with one of them being wired to a surged?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Double game box. They're both wired to the surge protector and the panel. One has got a dedicated ground wire going back, which makes it the isolated ground. And the other is the one ground wire.
And I look at, the wall is there. It's open. The wiring is there. The electricians are there. Put them in and be done with it. And if you never need them, well, there's going to be a lot of things that people can pick apart, and it isn't going to be our outlets.
Well, so that.
I don't believe in doing this all and then go back in and ripping it apart because you need something more drilling holes in right away. You don't have to.
Well, so I'll give the, I'll give a different perspective. The advantage I see to doing the surged outlets along with the surged strips or UPSs, whatever direction, you know, Sunnylink recommends for the equipment that we, we acquire from them is that basically, like, what was it about a month ago when we had something like a brownout where necessarily there was power, but because it was out of phase, these would basically safeguard us against that swap.
Yep.
And to me, it just, if you're already in there and you're buying so few of these really in perspective, it's not worth just
screwing with it.
pony it up and, and be over with it. Is the way I'm looking at it.
I guess the consensus here is for those two front desk area that they want two sets of those, four gang boxes.
And as long as we're talking about it, the clerk's office is going to need more.
We're not, we're not there yet. We're working our way backwards in this. I don't want to jump ahead. I want to go in order here. Okay.
Okay, so the open office 103 for both those workstations will do two quads.
Yep, two quads.
And to point out that the voice data jack is the symbol that's half, the triangle that's half filled. So what we typically.
I don't know, I don't know where you're, where, where are you at? Where's he talking about? Oh, up there? Okay, gotcha.
Near, next to each or at each computer station, there is a voice data.
Yep. Okay.
What we typically do is a six position, a face plate, a single game box with the, a face plate that has six positions in it for RJ45 jacks.
Yep.
Two of them would be terminated and on each of their own CAT6 cable. The other four would be linked off for future spare. And then that way, if you have, end up putting a printer at a, at a workstation or something else that needs an additional CAT6, you have the infrastructure to either add it right away as part of our meeting to say we need three jacks instead of two or add it later.
Tim, where you are. Go ahead, Justin.
Well.
One of you has to talk. So Tim, start. I asked for Tim first.
Well, what I'm wondering right now is, is who's pulling the ethernet? Is that the electricians or is that Sunnylink?
We can do either way. We, we've done it where we've provided just empty conduit boxes, and then your vendor will come in and pull the CAT6. We've, if, if we put the CAT6 in the contract, then we should be terminating on both ends so the contractor can test it. And then the rest of it, whether it's switches, patch panels. So in that case, I would recommend the patch panel and the rack would be in the contract and the device plates and the RJ45s would be in the contract. And then everything beyond that would be part of your vendor. So we can do either way.
So and as far as the patch panels, the rack and such, I mean, I would prefer to provide that just because I'm picky and I'm the one who has to deal with whatever goes in there. And as far as, you know, stubbing it in, I just, yeah, a single game box 12 inches away from any electric runs except to cross over. And three quarter inch piping is all that we would be, you know, looking for. Again, with the wire as well. If I have the option, I'd rather pull it just because I just don't like troubleshooting all the problems. And, and it's nothing against any individual electrician or electrical company, but I just, I undo a lot of mistakes and it costs me a lot of time and troubleshooting and, and when we do it, I don't worry about it because I know it's right.
Yep, and that's fine. We can just show a conduit stubbed up to an accessible point about the ceiling, a three quarter inch for each of those single game boxes.
Did you catch that, Tim?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Justin, did you want to add anything?
I was just going to ask if we're doing these boxes, so it's a single gang box, but with four, the potential for four drops, are we roughing in all four wires at the same time?
Well, we determine what you want for ether, obviously, we can have up to six ethernet lines in any one of those boxes if, as long as three quarter inch, you know, piping is put in.
Yep, but what I'm asking is.
Typically, we pull three to each location, but, you know, to cut back on, on funds, we can just do two. The, it's, it's not a lot. We don't have to rip open any walls or anything like that to add more later.
Yeah, what I'm asking is, does it make sense to do four now or two now? I don't know what, I mean, three, I guess, if you're only going to live, make one more live, right? Because your time is really done spent just slicing in your patch panel.
Yeah, the ti, there's time with the patch panel and the Keystone jacks, but the, you know, I don't like to do four for each one because then it gets really expensive in the switching to keep all of them live. And now every time anybody wants to plug in, it's not a matter of turning the port on. It's a matter of a trip out in adding a patch cable and removing another one or adding another switch.
So that's why I said, did you want to rough three in, but only make two live? And then we just distinguish at the Keystone what, what line goes to what port.
Yeah, we can do that.
Because then to me, you know, you, you don't have to run the wire. You paid for all your wire upfront that you would pass. I don't, I can't see that we would need more than three at a desk, but they only comes in twos and fours. But then you're just coming in and.
A lot of time, yeah. We go three because you have one for your phone, you have one for your PC, and you have one for your printer.
No, but what I was trying to, what I was trying to articulate, I apologize, I'm driving into that building, but is that, you know, in this instance, if you do a four, basically a four drop, you can have a four ports per desk. But we rough in three sets of wires, right? You can just leave one un, unpatched, basically. And if the town ever needs it, you just come out.
Yeah.
You'll make the keys, the key and the patch panel live. And then you're not dealing with having to go up in the rafters, go up over anywhere. It's just, oh yeah, here's the number, here's the number. We, we patch it in on two sides and we say, thanks, have a great day.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's fine. I would just, yeah, we can just pull the three, but we can, you know, terminate for two.
All right. We got all that?
Yep, got that.
So now we'll move on. We're going south. Or you want to do those two, those three?
In addition to the, the quads and the, the data outlets on the walls, we also have three floor boxes.
Yep. And the floor boxes.
Four boxes.
Floor, F L O R. F L O R.
Yep, recess into the floor. So these, these have both power and data.
Yep.
In each one of the, in each one of these boxes. So the one here is basically for the printer. That's where it's currently shown located. Here is work tables. And so, you know, if you've got some other people coming in that they need, need power, it's right underneath the table that are not running the extension cords back to the walls.
How big is the floor box, is it?
Both stick by six.
This big.
Yeah, they're both six by six.
Yep.
With a cover that pops up to plug in.
So they don't have to mess around with screws to take the cover off and get to that stuff. It's just.
No, it's got hand, it's got little handles on it.
It's got little flaps on them so you can get, plug in and, and keep them both. The other thing that we're also providing, we just got a duplex and a data port at the front desk.
Yep.
So just a standard duplex outlet, two plugins and a data in case you need to have a computer up at the front window.
Again, there's enough up at that front, that window setup.
You have to turn your mic on because the guys can't hear you online.
There's enough on that window setup to, that it would take a monitor and a printer and pencil sharpeners or any of those types of things. Enough if they had a, a computer sitting there like Carolyn has now. Do we have enough mechanicals there to support that?
I guess I, and, and we can bump this up. I was expecting at, at the most, this would probably be somebody's laptop.
Yes.
At the front desk.
Exactly.
That would just happen.
Because that's at the window. You're not going to put a computer at that window that anyone can reach to.
That's secured. They can't reach it.
They can reach under the window.
There, you've got that credit card reader that you plug in. So you'll have two outlets, one to plug your laptop, one to plug the card reader in at that front window.
There's no intent to ever put a computer there permanently.
Right.
That's your intent now, but we don't know what people can do down the road.
We've talked to the clerk's office. It's not big enough to do that.
And we all, we also provided on the wall kind of mirroring this workstation. We provided another fourplex.
Yep.
And a data outlet here for potential having a future workstation.
Perfect.
Here.
Yep.
Just, just to make sure that we're covered or, you know, you can have other stuff plugged into them.
I would also suggest that, is there any way to, between that first desk and that bookshelf, that you put a lower duplex in there just for cases of vacuum cleaners? It's not there, no, front, south, north wall, right there. Can you just stick a duplex down there so in case the vacuum cleaner or whatever? Right here, right there. Yeah, right there under the window. I'm just looking for. Hi, Justin. I know, good for you. Okay, so then we're coming back to those two desks.
Yep, so then we got two workstations down here, basically same setup.
With just one set of quads for each.
Voice data for each workstation.
Perfect.
So I was assuming every workstation would have two quads.
I don't think those need two quads because they're not going to be the intense workstations elsewhere. I think if you have one quad for each of them, you're probably going to do fine. But when we get into the clerk's office, that's a different story. Yes, so.
And, and we could provide, we could certainly provide a third quad.
Rather than four of them.
Rather than four of them, do a third.
I'm okay with that.
Too smaller.
So let me ask you this. Your, your future desk up by the window, do you have more on those two desks for random people than what you have up by that front window?
Yeah, he's got three quads there.
So we have less up by the service window, which is going to be a busy spot than the two desks for.
The service window is not going to have a computer at it.
Service window at most will have a laptop.
Yes.
Only needs one plugin. Every, every one of these workstations is planned for a computer.
Monitors.
And two monitors. That's why we're providing the quads.
So then move on to the clerk's office.
All right. So clerk's office, we've got quad and data on the south wall.
Okay.
By two quads on the south wall.
Or do you want to do one there and one in the east or west? I don't know. You tell me.
I, I think there should be.
I was gonna.
Four quads.
Thank you. Second.
In that office?
That needs to be overkill.
Okay, so we'll do quad and, and data.
On every wall.
Do a quad and a data on the west wall. Do a quad and a data on the west wall. Quad and data on the north wall and quad and data on the east wall.
And a plug in for the vacuum cleaner, so they're not running cords over a desk when they're.
No, no, it'll still be the same, cause they're down at the floor. Those quads are down here.
I have a question.
Yes.
When I'm looking at this layout for Office 105.
Yep.
Where is the treasurer clerk's office going to have the security camera display?
We haven't even gotten there yet.
No, but the reason I'm asking is because if it's gonna be a similar setup to what we have right now, which is television. So that's what we've done with most, seeing is you usually put um, data. Power and then uh, um. Usually you can do like an HDMI extender similar to what I just did here.
So we did it across from the desk in Hudson on the blank wall where the chair is.
Mm-hmm.
It works better because she can just raise her head and look at it.
What, yeah, and it also works if she has to do something like, hey, here's a training that myself and the.
Yeah.
First officer has to go through or something, they can just use the office and have.
So he's talking about doing one on this wall here for the TV.
On the east wall.
On the east wall for the TV.
Okay.
Oh, there's another.
We have a outlet up at.
Yep.
Seven feet.
Does that have to have a data cable with it too to do TV? What does Tim, what do they have to have for these TVs to stream? Stuff on and stream your security stuff?
We run HDMI over ethernet and we usually we go into some kind of a multiplex switch box so that. The monitors can be used for the video feed from the surveillance system, but they can. Also be used to pipe back in, say, a board meeting. If uh, somebody is sitting back in that room or what have you.
So I assume it'd be a one, a single duplex acceptable at about a foot from the ceiling. And then two empty junction boxes, one for voice data. If you have.
It's just easier to put the ethernet in. And then the other one would probably be something either.
Second one would be HDMI or whatever other video you want to send to it.
Yeah, well, you could just drop it as another three quarter inch conduit and then you can pipe whatever you want into it. So I would just make one as a data and the other one just be a. I don't know, like one of those guarded um, cloth boxes or something, you know, where they have the mesh teeth. And you can just do whatever kind of cable push through you want. Because then you could even do it where. You know, the clerk is sitting at her desk and we could hook up, you know, HDMI or whatever, and she could just broadcast to the television. Cast it or whatever she wants. Um, I don't know. Tim, do you have any objection to what I just said?
Um, not really, I, I'm just. Some of the words I didn't come across for me perfectly, but basically. Ethernet today carries everything and anything you want. So we don't really need HDMI cables, we don't need uh, audio cables. None of that stuff is necessary. All you have to plan for is ethernet and everything else will flow. As far as the boxes go. Um, and is or uh, the laptops go and plugging into. HDMI, they would usually just go into, they plug right into the. Uh, converter box that's got the ethernet cable on the other end of it.
Okay. Then can you also put this in this clerk's office here on that east wall?
Anywhere you can run ethernet to, yeah.
Right, somewhere in there on that wall, we have to have a TV also.
Great. So then I, it's similar to the voice data where the contractor would only provide empty conduit. And you would come in after, run your CAT six or voice data or video.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's. That's correct. If they're short, remember with HDMI too, you can only run about thirty feet. After that, you start having serious signal degradation, so.
No, you can, you can run longer, you just have to use optical HDMI, cause that's what I did above the office today, and that's a hundred footer.
Okay.
So, there's technology around that problem nowadays.
Okay.
What's our finished ceiling height in there?
Uh, in the open office, it's ninety, and Jerry's office is at eighty.
So then one more thing on this vault. As you know, it's gonna be filled with cabinets. Can we just do a single duplex at either end? For the purpose of vacuuming and that sort of thing? Cause you can't reach any of the others anyway, once all the cabinets are put in there, there's no way to move them.
I think we should have.
One on each end.
Do we have to have any security inside the vault?
No, because this whole office is secured.
No, I meant like a camera. We don't ever have to have that, right? It's not a requirement.
No, I've, have we ever put cameras in those? I don't think so.
I wouldn't think so. If you have a camera that shows the. Activity going in and out of there.
Yeah.
If you've got a camera that's covering the office. You know, as long as it can see the door.
Yep.
We don't have any substantial amounts of cash in there. It's important records to us, but.
Blank checks, cash.
Yeah, the big thing to, the big thing that we've always gotten dinged on is check printers. So if you've got a check printer, they have to be in a secure room, and usually they have to have. Some kind of control out of their visualized or their badge use.
Yes, and in terms of stamps, yeah, that if that has a cash value plus your cash plus your.
So anyway, that's. That's where I'm at on that.
Yeah, and then.
Are you wiring for a security camera there or not?
Not inside the vault, but he is wiring in the office for two of them.
And those security cameras would be same as voice data. We can provide conduit sleeves.
Sure.
Um. Lot of them that there in the ceilings, there may not be any conduit sleeves, it's just.
Right.
Wired right to the camera.
So, Tim, are you gonna be able to take a look at these plans, cause we sent them to you in your email and converse with? Um, Bruce or or Mike tomorrow or then or next week about where these cameras may go on the inside this building?
Sure, yeah, I can do that. And just keep in mind that, you know, once walls go up and you get a better visual perspective, sometimes. Positioning will change.
Sure.
And can I, can I just be CC'd on that if possible, Terry?
Sure.
Cause it, to me, it. The one thing I didn't see in the estimates from Sunny Lincoln, I'm guessing it was just because it was a a rough out estimate was. What does the? Security. Cameras, what do they flow on? So like, we use data lines on all of the new security cameras. Because then you don't have to run power separately. Some of the systems will use coax. I don't like those, they. They're finicky.
No, we haven't run coax now in probably ten years.
Oh, thank God.
Good, like that answer.
It's all, it's all power over ethernet and it pretty much will adapt to any system you want. We typically will use GeoVision because GeoVision will also integrate in with the GeoVision access control. So. It uh, it makes it nicer, but I'm not exactly sure how far you guys are going as far as access control goes.
Um, is it similar setup to Genetek?
I'm not familiar with that one.
Okay, I've only done Genetek and I've done Ubiquity. For security.
Yeah. Yeah, Ubiquity is um. We've done some of that, but it's so proprietary. It it's, it's too locked down, so we're. We've abandoned it for now, but um. GeoVision is more open architecture where you can bring your own camera. Which we do a lot of the time, we just have to pay a license fee for it.
Yeah, that's the advantage of the Ubiquity is you don't have license agreements.
Alright.
Right.
Where else do you want us to go on this as far as the center of this building is concerned? Will all these?
Alright, just briefly in the lobby, we're gonna provide a. receptacle and data.
Okay.
I'll land up here, we talked about that, being providing a table.
Yep.
Here for folks to sit at, so we'll have. Data connection capability there, and then just a general receptacle here on the south wall.
So I'm gonna back you up. You realize we don't let anybody access our internet here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we can, for one oh two, I don't see that we need it.
They say get rid of it. We don't allow them to access.
Lot and and your lobby, I don't feel is big enough to be having cable and chairs and.
Oh yeah, we might, we measured it out over here.
Yep, it's pretty little.
It has plenty of room.
Hey, we got plenty of room.
Yeah, take the data out, cause we won't let them on our data.
Well, hold on, we will need data, but it'd be for the camera, not for the. Not for the.
Not for the people.
Don't you have a guest line anyway for anybody?
No, nope.
We haven't had one for a while.
We got rid of it.
No, we got rid of it. After they tried to hack us.
So anyhow, anybody coming in here at the town hall, they're not picking up wifi on there anymore?
Oh.
Okay, I don't know, because I don't have that problem.
Well, cause you're on the board, but yeah, that's what happens. Okay, go ahead.
The conference room, we got.
I I just wanna back you up. So you have duplexes both in the lobby and the vestibule for vacuum cleaners, et cetera, right?
We're not showing anything in the vestibule right now, we can certainly.
Somehow we have to clean it.
Yep.
Yep, that's fine.
So put a, let's put a duplex there just to plug in for a vacuum cleaner. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, we've got uh, one receptacle on the east wall and one on the west wall in the storage room.
Yep.
Both of the doors. Um, and conference room. We hadn't talked about this before, but we're showing a floor box. One with a conference table.
That's a good idea.
So, you know, they can plug in. We're also providing data and power on the north and south walls as well.
Okay.
Of the conference room?
Conference room.
Wouldn't it make more sense to drop a data line underneath the table and then we just get a table that runs the? Puck in the middle?
You read my mind.
Mine too.
Yeah.
I say that and take the other two off.
Sitting here with the plugins over there.
Yeah.
Well, no, the 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 only thing I say is because then you end up with the tripping hazard we used to have that ran across the.
I say just put in the middle.
We would just drop it all in the middle.
Tim says.
Nobody, nobody even uses data lines on a wall in a conference room.
Okay.
Not unless we have to.
Alright.
So let's do that.
So we'll.
You'll still need a duplex on the wall. You'll still need a duplex on the wall for the cleaners.
Right.
Okay.
So keep uh, keep a duplex on the north wall.
Sure.
Or.
It should be.
We need, get rid of the duplex and the data on the south wall. And just have four blocks. We're also showing wireless access points, and I think those could be deleted from our drawings because there's no conduit required for those.
What do you mean?
I wanna know what that means, wireless access.
Well, that's your wifi, but what I'm asking is the, why would you have no conduit? Are you saying like plowing the conduit through the floor kind of conduit?
No, and there's that's your wireless access point right there.
Yeah.
There's no conduit in the ceiling. It's all.
True. Yeah.
So on the contract for the for the voice data, the contractor will do empty condom boxes only.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Alright.
So that means nothing on in the contract for the wireless access points.
Yep.
So if they leave those from these drawings.
Are you okay with that, Tim?
Tim, you're on mute.
Yeah, I know, I. I, took me a while to drive and unmute myself.
So I had an accident.
Yeah, I'm fine with that because we're running all plenum anyway, because apparently it's gonna be a plenum space, so. Um. Yeah, so it's, it doesn't matter to me.
And I can leave them on the drawings and just say, just. Notice nothing, the contractor needs to deal with them.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Right, the the HVAC is going to be using the. That area for cold air return, right?
Correct, ceiling space uh, between the bottom part of the trusses, which will have five eighths inch fire rated sheet block at twelve feet. And the ceilings at eight feet, nine feet, or in the town hall, it's at ten feet, that plenum space is uh, is a plenum, return air.
Okay, yeah, um, we have whole plenum cable, yep.
Okay. Move on.
Okay, um, IT room, we're providing uh, four. Quad boxes.
Okay. What does that sound like to you, Justin?
Well, my question comes back to and and because I don't know all the equipment we're gonna be putting in this room. So like some of the stuff that. Is up here in the other room. Um, and things that aren't necessarily required to make the microphones work, like directly. What we would keep in there, but. Um, my concern is draw. Right, so how much power we actually pull? So, and this is. This comes back down to the conversation of the. What we set up in the IT room for like the primary UPS. That'll keep like the POE systems running and all that. Um.
I think to answer your question, in that room right now, we're showing a panel word. And some IT likes panel words in the IT room and some don't, so we can do it the way. The reason we're showing it is it gives your amp word draw that you need in that room.
Yeah.
And it gives you flexibility to change your app circuits. Whatever you want. Um, the other question or the other thought is, we're not showing a thirty amp?
Right, and I requested a thirty amp.
So that would be fine, we can show a special.
Or just thirty amp outlet in that for racks. Are you thinking, Tim, doing a two forty volt thirty amp and then doing a step down UPS?
Um, yeah, I was, any UPS that's over twenty two hundred. Uh, VA is thirty amp now.
Yeah, but.
I think it's, but I don't think it's two twenty thirty amp, it's one ten. So it's almost the same, you can almost use the same dog bone you use on a thirty amp camper. So it's, but it is a um. It's a thirty amp that they uh, plug into. I can't remember what the NEMA number is on it. I'll have to look it up. But that's one thing we are always seem to be having to add later down the road. Because those little fifteen hundred VA UPSs and thirteen fifties that you get for. You know, a couple hundred bucks from Amazon. They just, they don't last, they're not reliable, they glitch out, capacitors go bad, they. Backfeed, arc, shut down when they shouldn't. It's just, it's a constant hassle. If we jump up into the. You know, mid-grade UPS is, it's a lot better.
Yeah, I was thinking either the APC or um, and Eaton, and those can all do two twenty.
Yep, that's the only thing we use now, we gave up on cyber power.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, do you, are you expecting the IT room to be wired at? Um. I always call the two hundred and forty volts or one twenty. So, single breaker or double breaker?
I typically just would go with one twenty thirty, uh, a thirty amp, a one twenty, and then another thirty. Or another uh, twenty amp circuit feeding the. The two quadplexes, I think that's plenty.
Okay.
Is there any generator in play here?
Yes, likely.
Yes, likely, we're talking about it.
If there is, we need, we need to have uh, that thirty amp circuit and probably at least one of the twenties. Fed by the generator.
I think the, the reason we're thinking about it is it's likely going to be. An identical setup to the how the. Current town hall and fire hall is where it's an entire building cut over, not just certain circuits.
Oh, alright.
Yep.
Um.
How many uh, racks do you think you'll fit in that room? Looks like maybe two will fit.
We're thinking, we're gonna start with one. We're gonna do one full size one, is my understanding.
Cause we have these two top ones and then the server, et cetera, that's over in the fire hall. So they believe they can get it in one rack, and Tim said that to me too, that one rack should suffice.
So should I go ahead and just do one thirty amp, hundred twenty volt, or two?
Let me.
Yeah, just, just one is plenty uh, from my point of view. I don't even know that we'll use it right out of the gate, but the point is to have it there would be nice.
Yeah. Um, and then I think the other one was the twenty amp. Yeah.
Yeah. What I'm showing is. Uh, four quads, each of those would have dedicated circuits going back to that panel, I'll be three in that room.
Mm-hmm.
So that four circuits, and then the thirty amp circuit would be the fifth circuit. And then that panel word would probably be a hundred amp, thirty two circuit panel.
And then don't forget the mini split.
Right, yeah, and that usually is above the door, the indoor unit sits above the door, if there's.
Okay.
A mini split for HVAC, I assume is what that's reference, okay.
And we're not planning on a ceiling in there, so it'll be a twelve foot.
Twelve foot rise, okay.
Okay.
And then, uh, if you want, we can wrap it in fire treated plywood, put them all thing things on the wall.
Hmm. Yeah. That's probably what I would do.
Are you comfortable with that, Tim? They're gonna put treated plywood on the wall in that IT room to mount that racking to? Oh, fire rated, I'm sorry. Yep.
Hmm.
Can you hear him?
I think the, the important part is that we'll, we'll have static control and we'll have basically electrical discharge control should something go wrong.
Well.
Okay. Um, then in the kitchen, we got just regular duplex outlets. We're showing two on either side of the sink above the counter. We're showing a one receptacle for the refrigerator, and then the counter for people to sit at, uh, we're showing three duplex outlets.
Okay.
There.
Are we gonna have a microwave in the kitchen?
Yeah, yeah. It'll be on one of those counters, just like it is here.
Okay, I assume these are gonna be GFCI for that one, cuz you have it next to a sink.
The ones on the right are showing GFCI already, the ones on the left don't need to be.
Yep.
Alright.
Okay, and then do we wanna put something on the south wall for maintenance, or do you think those are?
I think those are sufficient. There's not much room there. Okay, keep going.
Uh, we've got, uh, quad outlet for the drinking buttons. Um, general outlets in the mechanic electrical room, we're providing one.
And then in the mechanical electrical room is where the electrical service will be. So that LPB one will be the main panel word, LPB two will be a second panel if there's circuits are needed, and then LPB three is panel dedicated to the IT room.
Oh, okay. I see that up there, alright.
Um, one GFI outlet in each of the bathrooms, over by the sink. In the town hall space, we've got the, uh, four boxes, basically same as the other boxes that we're providing everywhere. And then, basically working our way around the room on about twelve foot centers, we're providing a duplex and a data.
So how far apart are the four boxes right now, roughly?
These four boxes are approximately.
Six feet, cuz they match the tables.
Yeah, so they.
So I'm saying.
They have, have the tables.
Yeah, so they'd be here. So I'm a little wondering if we should have another one between the long row and the south row. We should add one on either side there, cuz I'm feeling that's a long stretch, that's about twelve feet, and I'm thinking we should have a box between those, yep. And on the other side too. Don't you feel that way, that we should have one here and one there? That way, if we're sitting in this configuration, we all have a box.
Okay.
I have a.
Add one more here, one here.
I have a kitchen bathroom question, cuz I think it's for both areas. All these new, um, no-touch things, they run off of power. How do we power those? How do we make sure there's, is, have you provided a power source in the kitchen and the bathrooms to have those types of things?
They have no-touch faucets.
Yeah, we have no-touch faucets.
That's what we have now. No touch.
No touch, the site, those.
Okay. I'm currently showing hand dryers, I'm showing piped telecans.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have, I don't personally like hand dryers.
I hate them.
I think they're bad for your ears.
Yeah, I like the.
But all I'm saying is.
There you go, the faucet, the faucet.
No, we have to have it for faucet, we have to have it for faucets, um, soap dispensers. Um, if somebody gets a whim, be in their bonnet, they have to have touch-free things down the road, at least they have a plug in there, they can add them later.
Those run on, I think the, the soap and the.
Faucets run on batteries.
Yeah, they run on dou- double A or.
All of ours are batteries.
We did, we've done hardware.
I've never looked at them. I don't have.
I don't wash them.
Yeah, and your business doesn't.
Okay, yeah, they're all on batteries.
Well, it's, it's either or.
Okay.
I was gonna say, if we have an option.
Provided with battery or hardware. And we've been doing, uh, hardwired, so there's no battery.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have any maintenance.
It's funny because we've had these in here for four years yet, and we still haven't had to replace them. Watch, tomorrow they won't work, you know?
So we can do either way, and the way it works is, is you, there's a transformer underneath the sink, just a little, us- usually we actually put a receptacle underneath the sink, that transformer, just like a transformer on your laptop, we're plugging into that, and then that gets hardware into your.
Okay, well then do it for the sink and both bathrooms.
And the kitchen.
I said the kitchen, yeah. The kitchen and the bathroom.
Okay.
Alright, then back.
Want the, the sink faucet in the kitchen to be.
Touchless, just like that one is, yep, that one's touchless.
Okay. Alright, you do that?
So we'll add these in the main hall, and otherwise you just have duplexes around the outside of this, is that what I'm seeing?
Time out, I gotta, no, I have a toilet question.
Okay.
Are we gonna have self-flushing toilets? Are we gonna presume all of our, our people are smart and know how to flush the toilet?
They're, I'm not buying expensive self-flushers. That's a nightmare waiting to happen.
Right.
It's just a question, because for, for the.
Currently showing tank type?
Yeah, yeah.
For the urinals and toilets?
The urinal could be auto-flush.
I'm gonna let the man in the room weigh in on that one.
Don't, yeah.
You know, the urinal, we saw those auto-flush, the tank type, I, we can set those up to be auto-flush as well.
But if we don't run electricity to them, how will we hook them up to wifi?
Yeah.
Well, that's why we.
Who's crashing up on Tim?
I say no to the toilets. The toilets can be, you can push the handle. The urinals is up to you two.
There's only one, isn't there?
One, well, there's, there's only one, so do you want an automatic flushing one, or do you wanna do it yourself?
Just may, if it's only one, just make it an automatic, who cares?
Do I just want a hand wash station right above it then, so you can be once and done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with automatic.
Thank you, Matt. So the urinal's automatic.
Alright.
The toilets are all handles. Alright, back to the main room.
We do the, the, uh, soap dispensers.
Yes, we've already been down there.
Automatic, my hand is out.
I would love for the soap to, soap to be put in the men's restroom, cuz as of the last onboard meeting, I asked a month ago, I still don't have soap in that room. Yeah, someone just keeps putting water in the, like one hand pump, one, you, you.
Okay, so back to the main room. These are all just duplexes around the exterior, correct?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, I believe I have this, two things to say to you. We have to have boarding booths over in this corner for ADA requirement. I wanna make sure that at least one of those is a quad.
Okay.
Probably the bathroom wall one, and then this set of, this cabinet with mics is coming with us in that room. And I'm thinking somewhere over here. So just be aware.
And we can certainly, we can certainly provide another outlet.
That's fine, whatever you wanna do.
Two duplexes.
Yep. That's fine.
Um, speaking of data, for the one fifty, uh, one fifteen town hall, all the drops that we have in here for power.
And data.
And data, we, we're gonna need the shielded cabling for all that, but obviously we don't need shielded cabling for all of our drops, right, Tim?
Tim, you wanna weigh in on that, on shielded cabling on the drops in the town hall?
Uh, no, I don't think you need to worry about shielded cabling.
Well, you have, you have your power and your data on your floor jacks within, they're combined units.
Yeah, well, that, as long as they're piping in, coming into one side and the other, the same they did like in Hudson.
Are we?
That's what they did in Hudson, they kept them twelve inches apart.
Right, so the, the, the floor boxes get laid out, so you've got power coming down one side, and the data conduits coming down the other side, so they're, they're all separated, and then they just tee off into the boxes. So keep all, keep all the conduit in the floor, at, at least twelve inches apart. So you've got power and, and come down one side, coming down one side, data coming down the one side, you know, there'll be some crossover, but you're not running the conduits side by side for the full length to feed everything.
And then, uh, the devices inside the floor box have separate single gang boxes.
They do.
Yeah.
They're separated, so the only time that the cables would be technically next to each other is when you plug in.
Yeah, when you're at the terminal box.
Right.
What I'm asking is, where is your electricity piping in from your, I'm assuming that the breaker boxes are all in the mechanical room. I'm making an assumption.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so everything's being fed from the, the panel boards that are in the electrical room, so, you know, probably be running class this way and feeding up, feeding over and up.
Okay, so you've, you've created a U. Where are you coming with your data line then? Cuz your building is, your room is in the dead center of that room. So you're gonna either have to cross o- under or over your conduit with your block of fifteen ethernet or sixteen ethernet cables, right?
So, Tim, do you wanna weigh in on the crossover of the data lines with the electrical when you cross over in the room?
Yeah, you can do, you can cross over fine. Just don't run alongside.
Okay.
Okay.
You can cross over all day long, but if you run alongside electric for even five feet, you'll drop down from, uh, category six to category five by the time you hit the end of that five-foot run.
Yep, that's why I was asking is just to understand the shape of how the conduit's gonna pull through. There was one other thing I, I realized we did not discuss for conduit between two rooms.
Sure.
Which is, we'll need conduit between the mechanical room and the IT room for the fiber pull that goes from northwest communications to the IT room, and then the fiber pull that goes from the IT room to this building. So we'll have to have a three-quarter inch pull from the IT room to mechanical room.
And Tim did talk about that, about bringing it around, out this way and across.
Yep, yeah, and, and we'd actually talked about having, having the two conduits coming up in the IT room.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
One from this building and the other ones coming from.
Northwest.
Northwest, and they both come in, you know.
Yeah.
However we determine is the best location to.
Pop it up from the roof over. Either way, I, I don't care where it comes in on the, from the street side, but my, my assumption was that everything was gonna come in or out of that mechanical room, just for simplicity sake, sake.
I think they were planning to put in the northwest and the IT room.
If we want, you know, if we want those conduits to come in down here, I don't think that's a big deal either, so.
Yeah, but does door, it, it, uh, is that cuz you wanna move the service over to the new building, or otherwise that's not necessary once the fibers in between the two buildings?
Uh, we're gonna move everything over to the new building, and then this one's just gonna be daisy chained off that one.
Okay, I'm glad to know that. Okay, yep.
I just think that's gonna be easier, cuz the maintenance will all be done in the new building, and this one will be just whatever we absolutely have to have.
Okay, that sounds good.
But the question, Tim, was, the question that was, they were talking about here is whether this should be coming up into the IT room or into the mechanical electrical room?
Well.
No, it does, well, it technically doesn't matter, but, um, it's, it's fiber, it's, it's not, you know, doesn't matter if it runs alongside, you know, a bunch of, uh, compressors, it, it doesn't, uh, hurt it, but I would say you'd run it into the IT room. I don't know why you'd run it into the, some other, you know.
Well, uh, I, okay, here's why I'm asking. Where is Northwest gonna hit this building and mount their equipment? Cuz they have to mount that outside conduit, um, box into our building. So the, the issue that I'm looking at is, if you look at this today, right, Northwest has their external-facing box, right? It either has to hit the mechanical room, which is, to me, behind the building, and then you'd run it, you know, you'd run everything outside of it, or they have to hit where you have your front door. Somehow you have to have fiber get into the center of the building.
Yeah, I guess I, you know, my thought would be, put it down here on the west wall, just south of the door. It's basically coming into the center, if you come into that exterior wall, go up above the ceiling and feed over to the IT.
Okay, so we're.
I personally don't care where.
Yeah, well, for us, it's just a measure of feet. The only reason I was stating was, if we have one section of the building that we know that we're never gonna put an extension on, and we want everything to be in a row, then we would run our cabling, just like we would the electricity, right?
Ah.
So if we're gonna run your electricity, your fiber, your natural gas lines, plow them all the way into the one section, lay it and never see it again.
That's why you're talking about the mechanical room, cuz you know we're never gonna go that direction.
Correct. That's.
Go south.
We're not gonna go south. We can go western, east.
Yeah, see, the, the concern I had with that is, if you ever have the need to expand, now you've gotta cut both your buildings off, do a bunch of junk, let's just lay it out so we don't ever think about that section of it again.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, trying to keep up with it.
We don't want, we definitely don't want blocks in the north wall.
No, so let's do that, if you guys wanna work that in, and since Tim doesn't care, I think that works great.
Yeah, I, but I'm assuming for Tim, it's just a question of how many feet you have to run, right?
Yeah, it doesn't, well, and Northwest is, as far as the, their fiber goes, they're gonna take care of their end of it, right to the, uh, D-mark point. And then, as far as we're concerned, yeah, we're just, it's nothing to run fiber inside.
Okay.
Yeah.
So before we get done with this first page, can you also talk about those exterior restrooms?
There you go.
Oh, go ahead.
Before we go, can I ask a question about conduits? So those conduits that are for the, the utility, um, the phone, I forget who it was, century.
Northwest, Northwest.
You, usually I use a orange conduit, so a couple orange conduits up to the property line, and then a orange conduit between the buildings.
Yes. Yeah, you should use orange.
Okay.
Orange meaning interducts or?
I missed that.
Yeah, say it again.
What do you mean orange? You mean it, interducts in that orange, or some, or just orange?
No, just typically orange designates fiber. And so if there's an option, if you're running, if you're talking about conduit or flex tubes, then usually they're orange in color.
Okay.
Alright.
But it's, I don't, I don't know that that's code. It's just what we see in the field. So when I'm looking at a building and I'm trying to figure out what's running where, it's very helpful to look and say, oh, okay, there, there's an orange piece of conduit, we know what's in there.
Sure, yep.
Okay, so just do those two exterior restrooms.
Yep, so the exterior bathrooms, uh, right now, we're showing a, uh, GFI outlet adjacent to the sink.
And these'll have touchless faucets and soap dispensers in them?
Yes.
Can I ask a really silly question? Why do they need power? Like, why do we want an outlet in the exterior-facing bathroom?
For the bidet.
Oh, okay. Is it so I could connect my wifi to that, figure out how much water I use, or?
I think it's code.
Oh, is it?
I think it's code, you have to have an outlet in there, but you'll have to check on that. No? He's shaking his head. Remember you're in Wisconsin.
Not code.
Okay.
And in residential, not.
But how are you gonna clean them if you don't have an outlet?
Stainless steel floors and a pressure washer.
You're still, I, I'm just gonna say, you need an outlet.
Okay, uh, the only reason I ask is I don't want anyone just going in there and like charging their phone during a baseball game or something.
Oh, that's.
That seems like a silly use of our money for their stuff.
Are we gonna do, um, touchless faucet, touchless soap dispenser?
Yep.
And you want, I don't necessarily want paper towels in this, I think I want dryers in these.
I am showing hand dryers.
Yes, absolutely.
And he's also showing a baby changing station. Also showing a baby changing station.
Yep.
In each one of those, I'm also showing baby changing station.
In those.
Bathroom here as well.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
So I got paper towel cabinets that I'm doing
Yep.
In the two main bathrooms, but hand dryers up here, just so that we're not having to mess with paper towels.
Okay. Anything else that we need to know on data and electric on this building? What about on the exterior?
So on the exterior, we've got a GFI outlet at the door on the east wall. We've got a GFI outlet at the door on the west wall.
Okay.
And then we've got one outlet right here in the north, north wall.
And nothing on the south side?
No.
You don't think there's any reason we would ever need to have one?
That's what I was gonna say. Are they required? Are they required to have an outlet on the outside? Because and my next question was to you, how often have we used the ones that we have?
Well, I know we use the ones in the back. But I don't know about the front.
I.
Oh, that's where I'm at. Yeah, that's why I want one on the south side.
My other question is for lights on the outside of the building?
Well, let's finish the outlets. So we'll put an outlet on each side.
Oh, we're treating lights and electrical separately.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to lights yet. I know.
I'm with you.
Okay, so now we're we're all on board on the light on the outlet side of things. Now let's talk about lighting, because you gave us this. Something.
No, go ahead, Tim.
Tim, you have something or not?
No, I'm just trying to sit here quiet. Maybe I didn't do so well.
Oh, so my, my question is, how hard is running the cabling for outside cameras gonna be? Like, do we use conduit through the soffit or anything?
That's all just one single ethernet, obviously, too, even if it's a heated camera. So we just run it with PoE plus plus. So it's, yeah, there's and for the low voltage side of it, it's not a big deal to get lines over to where the cameras will be outside. Now, our, the only question is, I I doubt it, but you don't plan on putting up any, uh, like, well, if you're talking like ubiquity, like a U six mesh, those little tubes um, for outside wifi, but I wouldn't assume you're gonna be supplying wifi out there.
No, but my my curiosity was, because I'm not a thousand percent familiar with the steel siding versus the soffit side versus mounting points, because it's not gonna be like this building, right? Or we would just mount to the side of the wall is my assumption. My assumption would we, we're mounting underneath the overhang, right? So what I was trying to be curious about is, do we need to plan ahead to lay out some form of even one inch conduit that runs to sections and then we just pull through after the building is set up?
Typically, what I'll do is put uh, single gang boxes where you want them. I'll coordinate with you and Tim. And we can put single gang boxes shoved into an accessible ceiling from those corners or all the way back to the rack, whatever is makes sense.
Yeah, all of it's gonna run to the IT room, but you'll have to have that for the I'm assuming the town hall space is like this, just a floating ceiling, right?
It's all gonna be this way.
Okay, so then that would just be a case of us pulling the cabling through to the cameras and for the access points. But the outside is where I was being curious.
Yeah, and you're, I'm glad you brought up the outside, because I know in Hudson, I had a tough time mounting some of the cameras. Uh, there wasn't a lot to fasten to.
What are our crosses apart for?
So this.
If you're familiar with the cameras in Hudson, at the Hudson Town Hall, they're on the corners. Uh, there's a, they're just on two corners. They cover the whole entire outside off the two corners. Each camera uh, comes off the corner and is got a quad, has a quad camera system in it. So you you literally have four camera positions with each one. They work out really nice and they look, they look good, too.
You're gonna, you're gonna need a little bit more on this one, because you have so many step outs.
Yes.
And so it's gonna be, that's why I was thinking about it now, is because as I was drawing it out three weeks ago or whatever it was, I came out with something like eight step outs you'd have to account for with a camera.
Well, we can, yeah, and I'll have to take a better look at that. And then two, you know, as you go up in cameras, you go up in in cost and you guys will have to decide what you want to do. But the, you know, we can on, I think it's like the, you know, there's a couple of uh, step outs, as you call them, I guess, uh, at the town of Hudson as well. We've got a one hundred and eighty degree camera on the one end that faces the main road. And then we cover all the rest of the building. No, actually, we have a one eighty in the back, too. So we have two one hundred and eighty degree cameras and then we have uh, two fourplex cameras. So there's a, there's a total of, uh, well, you know, the one eighties are kind of like two, right? And the quads are four, so yeah, there's a lot of cameras covering the outside of that building, but.
Yep.
Yeah, if you just look at the design, you'll you'll see it. I I call them step outs. You can call them push outs. You can call them whatever you want, but.
Yeah. Um, so you, Tim, Tim, put that on your list. I'll send you an email tonight to remind you on that you can talk to Bruce on this and get this figured out as far as the cameras are concerned.
Yeah, yep, that should be fine.
Okay, and you're on E two oh one. What is this that you show?
Reflective sandblinch on the lights, interior.
Oh, lights. Oh, lights. Good lord, look at all that.
Package of the light fixtures that we're recommending. I'm not, I'm not a real big fan of these lights.
Why?
Just because of the glare.
Oh.
So the fixtures that we're suggesting, and we can do the I just, I like that the lights that shine up and
Oh.
Used light, so it's
Okay.
It's not shining down through the vents.
So are these gonna be flushed into this dropped ceiling? Okay.
Way into the ceiling.
All right.
I think it's very similar to what Hudson Public Library has, is those, they fire upward and then they diffuse down.
Diffuse down, okay.
In the town hall space, it'll be two by four fixtures.
Yep.
This size.
This size.
And then basically everywhere else, it's a two by two.
Okay.
So what do they look like? They don't look like a box like this, right? They said they're gonna be two by four.
Right.
These are two by four. Yeah.
The only difference is that instead of the light shining straight down through.
They'll go up like this.
It shines up and it's got reflectors that push the light down, so you don't see the direct light source.
Yeah.
Like this.
Instead of tubes, do you have little round things in there? Instead of saying here, showing.
Yep, so this is the picture. So the the light is above this box in the middle. And the reflectors are on both sides, so it's, yeah, so the light, light source is up here. This is a section through it, so light source is here.
It's here, but it's got the diffuser over it. It sits like this.
Yep.
I like that.
Oh, they're, I call these, I call these migraine lights.
I like the clean look of this, so that's why I wanted to make sure they were recessed.
Yep, yeah, they basically lay in like this. They're actually up a bit, because it's it's not flat. You got the reflectors and so.
So can I ask you about the storage room and this mechanical room and this IT room? So they're gonna have fixtures in them, but they're those sheet rock ceilings. Is that what you're showing?
Yep, so.
And why would we do a sheet rock ceiling in the IT room? Doesn't that need, or you have to have it, don't you?
Yeah, we have the sheet rock bottom for the roof presses to, for fire.
Right, gotcha.
To the rest of.
I forgot, okay.
This is basically five eight inch, fire rated sheet rock at twelve feet.
Okay.
And then these fixtures are the strips, the purple strips. Um, they're just surface mounted.
Okay.
LED lights.
All right.
Provide, you know, provide the light in those spaces.
Got it. And then what's in these outdoor toilets?
So the outside restrooms and the interior restrooms is the last fixture. It's a, it's a recess LED downlight.
Is that a can, kind of like a can light?
Okay. Oh, I see them. All right.
I was gonna ask, is that, do we want to do those in the vestibule or no?
No, I like these.
Uh, yeah, but I'm talking about like in the vestibule where it's just a basically a, this doesn't leak as much air go through when we open the door.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They don't have to be a schwankie.
These two by two fixtures are better for keeping the air.
Oh, okay.
Below the ceiling than that.
Okay.
Oh, perfect.
I'm comfortable with that. And then what are you looking at for the outside of the building as far as at that entrance for lights? What do you do? Do you do the can lights above it? Do you do spotlights going for? What are we doing there?
Um, I guess I, I was thinking that we could, we could do some uh, soffit lights.
What page are you on?
So I'm looking at the A three oh one, exterior.
Okay. So you're thinking about a game on, yes? Right.
Halfway up the gable on this side, one light halfway up, so we're and we can, we can position those so they're laying down.
Yes. But what about underneath the gable, so you can see the door?
Right, so that, so that both will illuminate, you know, if you want to do the signage, like you've got shells.
Sure.
It lights that up, but but it also brings light down to light up the uh, the whole front entrance.
Okay, I got you. I get you.
Against the wall, right, immediate on that door area?
Well. So I come back to this. This gable's coming out from, the door is back from it, right? We have something over our head when we're opening the door.
Just the, just the, just the gable overhang that's.
Yeah, it's not real big.
They need a little can or something right over their door.
No, no, I just want to back up to what the door looks like. So I understood that we were gonna build out over our head. So we are not standing in the rain trying to open the door like we do here.
That ain't much of a build out.
So I want to know how much of a build out that is.
Yeah.
That's not enough. I'm sorry to say it. I don't want to make you change it, but I'm sorry to say that's not enough.
That's what I was looking at. I was like, I don't know why we're talking about this so much, because it's only about a foot and a half is what it looks like on the ground. That's why I was confused.
How hard is that to change that, Bruce?
Um, well, I guess it, it depends on how much of an overhang.
How much of an overhang can you support before you have to put posts up?
Yeah, the maximum is actually, well, the by code, you can be forty eight inches, because they treat that as an overhang and it would need to have a fire.
You have to have what?
You have the fire protection.
Fire protection, so we have to stay underneath that. Could we do, could we do three feet? Okay, I I'm willing to compromise on that. But that means I still think we need a little can light above our heads to help us get in and out of that door.
Two can lights in the.
Out there, yeah, okay.
So I'm, I'm really confused. You get forty eight inches, right?
No, forty seven.
Forty seven inches, one inch shy of, okay, and we're doing that to avoid posts. And we're avoiding posts, because we're avoiding putting fire suppression outside? I I'm gonna just share what my thought is, is that sounds kind of cheesy. Cause I, that my concern is you're standing out there, that wind blows, you're getting wet with a thirty six inch. I'm understanding three feet.
I could send the link, and if you looked at it, for what the front of the building looks on that link I sent uh, for R M F. Their, their front of their building looks, they'll take care of everything that you're, you're squawking about.
I'm not squawking.
I am.
Well, you can call it not squawking, but you're voicing concerns, what, how, you're voicing concerns. And if you look at that link and how that building looks, it, it says, it'll fit right into the hood here. And it'll take care.
But this is.
It'll take care of.
The photo, the photos you sent are an overhang. It has posts.
Did you see, is that R M F's front of their building?
I'm, I just opened your email and those have posts, so that would be an overhang.
What about the R M F building with links with the matching?
When did you send it?
At the bottom of the email.
She doesn't have the email. He has the photos.
The last one, so the the last picture on that email is the R M F building. And that only has an overhang. It doesn't have, the the church has the post, like Justin's indicating, R M F just has an overhang.
On the, on the link where they showed the front building where they had the three posts or whatever it was out there?
On the church?
Oh, R M F building.
Okay, there's one photo called R M F. When I opened that photo, there's a white minivan with a blue building and nothing else.
That's the only one we have.
I has no.
There's no link. We put the, she put the photos in. There's no link.
That's the two points I think, that's the problem.
What?
Um.
Here it is.
The link's not open.
Okay.
Here it is. Right there it is.
That's, that's all I got.
That's R M F.
Though that's, that's the gable now, that is not the front of their building, Teresa. Go in that email and I sent you the link.
I'm, I'm, I'm in your email as well. I, I have
No.
Eight photos that say church, one that says R M F. I have no links in this.
Okay, that's, I've had problems with our stuff with this things before. So just go into R M F Auto's website, you go on location details and they've got the front of their building there. And if you, obviously, this is overkill, but this tells you how we could look. And how we could work around.
We could pull that out and that's what we had before.
Go on their website, Teresa.
Well, so I.
I don't think it shows on that link that you.
I was working off the picture that had posts out and you had a walkthrough.
There it is with the big posts.
And like I said, that is overkill, but that gives you some
But the.
That gives you a finished visual of a real building.
So we had this.
And that's what we.
Took away.
Yeah, it was, it got off.
We had it.
You gotta run further out.
Cause it was there.
If you wanted four feet, that gets more than four feet.
So I'm sorry, when did we take that out?
We took it out when we had to expand the center to get everything in. Cause if you look at the new plan here, this is a double, see, we brought both of them out to get the lobby and the
Vestivale.
Vestivale.
So for me requesting the vestibule and lobby be separate, I lost, we lost the protection of walking in from outside. So just what I'm understanding.
Yeah.
You can still do a, a version of that, and by looking at this, as I said, for those of you that can't put the distance, say, I can see that building standing.
No, I know.
Go out and look and see. I think this is much bigger than what we need. I think it's.
Well, so here's, here's, I'm gonna try and point.
Oh, I'm back. Sorry, I gotta bring it back. I clicked out what, go ahead.
It's okay.
The, the church had.
You're talking about, are you talking about the one that's got the actual posts on it, or are you talking about the one that doesn't have posts on it, but it's just mounted to the wall? There, there's two doors.
Buildings with two different fronts. R M F building and the church building on their end, make their entrance. And there's no photo of R M Fs.
So this entrance here is probably only about three and a half feet over that door, isn't it? If you look right here where this corner is.
We don't have to use posts.
You already used posts at three and a half.
That's why, that's what we're having the debate about, is not using posts at all.
I don't want to use posts.
I do.
Have that fee of, of whatever they call those, where there, there's no support. There's.
No, I think that the mis, I think the mistake is that when I made the change, when I requested the change with the vestibule and lobby being separate, I didn't know that I was nuking the posts out front for people to be able to walk in without getting wet or covered in snow or whatever.
Let's hear from you as to the alternatives here. Talk to me about alternatives on this entrance.
I can do a covered entrance.
Put the mic next to you, so Matt can hear, sorry.
I can do, I can do the covered entrance. We can, we can work through. I can do, I can do the covered entrance. We can, we can work through if we have to provide fire protection or not, we can separate it from the interior, from the inside of the building, so it's totally separate. Um, and, and be able to work through that. So if we wanna, if we wanna pull this whole gable out four feet or six feet, we do that. If we wanna go, you know, I think even just coming out four feet, you're probably gonna wanna have posts. But the benefit is if we put up the post, now we've got someplace to mount the push plate for the power assist on the door, plus we've got a place to mount the card access. Cause plan is to have the pair of doors
Right.
that up for card access.
Right.
You're not having a phone with keys, you come by, swipe the card, and you walk in the door.
Is that where we could mount our bulletin board that we have to post?
Could be under the overhang.
Notices too?
No, it's gonna have to be separate.
Okay.
It's not gonna mount to that post, you don't, there's not enough.
There's not enough, no, but somewhere by there. Yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, and, and we could do, you know, on the, the side lights on either side of the door, we could do something similar to what we did at Hudson. And have a, have a
She doesn't, she doesn't wanna use the window for the bulletin board, she's already seen that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't either, and my question on your side lights is why do you have big side lights if you're, we talk security and boltproof glass and all these things and put in two big side lights? Last horse. It's, it's just a question, I mean. I don't know, I just was questioning why all that red big glass is also facing north, which is old.
So tell me how wide this glass, let's back up. So if it's gonna, if we're gonna put an overhang on this of say five feet, let me just pick a number. What kind of cost estimate are you talking about to do that versus what you've got on here right now? Are we talking five thousand dollars to change that, or are we talking a thousand dollars to change that?
No, it's five.
I mean, I mean, you're talking about cost five or five. I struggle with that.
I say we just leave it.
Well, I'd like to push it to three feet before you leave.
Yeah, thirty-six inches, but then don't go any further. I'll let go the posts.
I'll let go the posts. Uh, the only thing I wanna know is where she's gonna have, because that's interesting that you brought up your bulletin board and that's impo- that's a must have.
Right, but it can be freestanding. It doesn't have to be attached to this building.
And these, no, why would we have something sta- freestanding out in the, in the way? And then you've got, you're gonna have your stuff for your handicap access. You don't want a bunch of clutter out there, you have to shovel around and
That's the only thing I wanted to job Terry's mind with is the slave labor and equity you'd have in going outside and dealing with that board outside versus in a window. You got snow, rain, sleet.
But there's no protection whatsoever on that one, and it was
Probably doing that right now with ours.
That one has
You can do it inside like the
No, it's on that south wall, there's zero protection, there's zero overhang, and they bought the cheapest one they could buy.
Think of it like a library drop box, where it's basically like a window, but people only just see the bulletin board, they don't like look at you like you're taping something up.
And if you have, and if you have H-channel form steel for your frame on that, your bulletin board, that's not even gonna be similar to what you're dealing with now, Terry.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Bulletin board.
I have no idea.
You basically built a three quarters plywood.
Inset, doors.
Doors that go on the inside of a window at Tom Hudson, two doors that open at heart on that post, and you basically close it, and you can look through the window and see everything that's
Which window would that go on?
Oh, that's the problem.
Don't say it, that would be, you know, it would be on one of the side lights at the entrance in the vestibule.
So you want it so they can see it from the outside without going in the building is one of the important things we need, right?
How big are the side lights?
Probably three foot, or are they four?
Somewhere between thirty and thirty-two inches wide.
Oh, they're little ones. Why bother?
Thirty-two inches wide holds, holds, yeah.
Sixteen for the door.
It's still two pieces of paper side by side. But I come back to this. I personally don't like it there. I'm, I'm looking at this saying, should we look at something different? And I come back to what I have seen in other municipalities where they have a post and
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Doors open and close, and you post there and they can walk up the sidewalk, look at it, and walk back to the car.
So totally independent of the building.
That's what I'm trying to tell you, yes.
Either that, or I would do it on this.
Like a little library is.
Like the little libraries are, but
Instead, it's in a bulletin board.
But it's a big window instead of having a divider thing, so.
But I just think
Either freestanding or put it on the side of the town hall, not on the side.
Well, you're right. I think it should be freestanding.
On at the
Either way.
The building side sidewalk.
Yes.
Close to the front entrance.
Yes.
Where you can do it to the east or to the west, one side of the other, as you're walking up, so people can see it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Surprise.
So, so then looking at this, I saw one of these drawings that showed the um, threshold or the concrete for the entrances and exits.
Yep.
I want sidewalk across here, the whole front of this building. And back this side all the way to that door.
Well, you have to have sidewalk on, you have to have sidewalk on basically all three sides of this building.
So it, right.
But I want it wide enough that two people can easily still, I want it at least four to five feet wide. Cause two people need to stand side by side on it. So if you're running elections and you're zigzagging, you can have that much room. Cause my idea is for elections, these people are gonna be up there and this way, and they're gonna be going out and back that way.
Are you gonna have, um, so you're gonna have, are you gonna have the cement go right up to the, the sidewalk go right up to the building?
That or rock, no, no plannings.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, I thought sidewalks, and I was gonna say, I saw your little boulevard with your turnaround, and I thought that's a that's a plowing and maintenance thing, knock those out.
You just have to be careful who you have hired, that they're not gonna cream your building when they're shoveling right next to the
They're, they shouldn't, because if you've got a sidewalk and
Well, if you're running your concrete to the building, that's can be an issue.
Yeah, so sometimes they drag the equipment right up to the building and then they get
That's why I was trying to put like a foot of rock around it and then step the concrete away.
And I'm fine with that, all I was gonna say on that one, one drawing you had it with it. You had it like a drive-through horseshoe thing for driving, and then there was a little boulevard with a couple of little bushes and I, I'm all
Trying to separate that so you can still have parking on the other side of it, that's why that
I know why, I can see why you did it, but and maybe now that we have more information for the setback of the building, that'll change it. Let's just go back to your sidewalk. I'm not opposed to having sidewalks in front of the buil- on three, the three sides, and having it right up to the building with your little rock boulevard if you want it. I'm not a fan of rock, but I'm not gonna fight it. Cause there's not a other good alternative to the rock.
And if you don't have plannings in it, it doesn't matter.
The only reason I, I wanna bring this up is cuz we've been burned by it on this building is how we manage the water that comes off the sides that
That we'll get, we're gonna have
In the front there, cuz the front of this building is gonna have a substantial amount of water come off of it. And if you do concrete all the way up,
It's gonna increase it.
You're gonna need just tile or something by the time it hits someplace where the ground will leach it out.
I think you're gonna have to discharge it out to south and the west side and right into the prairie.
Right, and he could, you're gonna, you have guys to figure that out, right?
And, and, and we can, you know, we can, we can collect from the downspouts
Yep.
along the north side and, and have that
Drop there.
to the west. We can basically do the same thing on the south side too.
Okay.
Just capture those.
And you're gonna run them both to the west?
All, run it all to the west and the west.
So then Terry, for your employee entrance here, on the office for door one oh three
That's, that's an entrance, that's an exit.
Oh, it's only exit.
Yes.
Two, the door on the west wall and the door on the east wall, they'll have no exterior.
Okay, those are both going that way. So then everyone will always come in through the vestibule.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Then I don't care. I was gonna say, coming into that door, if it's raining outside.
Oh, no, 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 no.
That's gonna be fun.
No, that won't be good. Okay, a couple of things, I just wanna make the board of, I, I, first of all, is everyone comfortable with the lighting? We can move on.
Yes.
And you can come back and let us know about the exterior, cuz are we gonna have spotlights on these corners of this building?
What do you call a spotlight? Are we gonna have
Well, something that's downspout, but something that protects, cuz this building has it, you know.
Fifty thousand lumens apiece, just all four corners, six corners.
I was gonna say, the ones on the roof I wish could be adjusted again.
The plan would be to do stoplights.
Okay.
Oh, like downshooting?
Okay.
They should be all downlights.
Down rather than out.
Mm-hmm.
We will have some shoe lighting for the parking lot.
Good, cuz we need something.
But we won't do that from the building.
So on the building side where the restrooms are, what are you doing there?
Um, we do
They're gonna be above the door.
Probably be a wall moment light here because we've got a cable.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Here to light up these.
And will you have some sort of bigger halogen lights of some kind that shine a little bit towards this east so that when people come out that door in a November election at eight o'clock at night, they're not stumbling around?
Right.
And we're gonna need hoods over those too, so they're not.
We've got a light above this door as well, that, that's also required for emergency egress.
But it's not, I don't find it to be as bright as what I'm talking about.
Are they gonna be like a gooseneck, something that's hanging out with the shield so that they're not windy and they're not, we need something so that they're they're enclosed from the weather and not when we get a wind or
Are they gonna be similar to the town of Hudson's? Those square things?
Yeah, the big square LED lumen, high power.
Cause I just feel that that door especially needs good lighting.
Yep.
Because people are gonna be coming out of there, going around in that way, and I don't want people tripping and falling because they can't figure out where they are.
So, so we make sure that we've got stoplight close to the corner here.
Okay.
So it'll, you know, kinda wrap around, but then we'll have, you know, probably one light here for the two restrooms and another light above the door here, because this is required for emergency egress.
Are you gonna have anything that indicates where the termination of the sidewalk is on the other side of the bathrooms and the doors, so when they come out, they can see there's a rail or something like don't go any further cuz you're out of sidewalks?
You answer that.
Yeah, you can just end aside.
So then you can just end it.
I have a, I have a different question.
Go ahead.
Do we have any door controls for those exterior facing bathrooms?
Yes.
So that they will only be open during certain hours.
Yes, they're gonna have timers on them.
Thanks.
That'll be perfect.
They'll have
Oh yeah, we've already talked about that.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't recall the conversation, that's why I was asking, cuz I was like
Be run on a time clock, um, to unlock them and lock them, and then on the inside, there will be a thumb turn to lock the door, there'll be an indicator on the outside that shows that the bathroom's in use or available. And then that thumb turn is interlocked with the motor, so you can't walk out the door and lock it.
Unlock it, yep.
So it, it's just one action, you press down on the lever to leave, it unlocks the door and you're on the door.
Are they unisex bathrooms, or are we gonna start out with gender?
Uh, they're both.
They're both set as unisex.
The, the sign
The outside ones.
The signs on both doors will have the international symbol for accessibility, and they'll say all done.
Works for me.
Oh, I didn't know.
Are the, are the strikes in those outside bathrooms going to be interfaced with the building access control?
Yes.
Oh, we need electric there then.
We already have electric for that.
Good thing.
Um, the other thing I was gonna ask was for the light switches. Because in the packet you've handed us this list that it is compatible, it could be made compatible with the building, so they could be networked on. So if we're going with this series of lights, if you look on page three of the attached packet here, you can see there is an inlight wired network setup, these can also sit on wireless, so in case of something like you know, she's in her office and she can go into a controller and hit the outside light on something if it's a storm or a need, all I'm asking is if we have to account for it or not. Cuz I see Chris's face going, why are we talking about networking lights?
No, 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 I'm, I'm silently educating myself as we speak this, not doubting, no.
Yeah, so what I was curious about is, as we lay it out, is what's everyone's feeling on this? Cuz you're only gonna wanna do all of this and touch it all one time. And then you're gonna wanna be done, and it doesn't mean that you have to turn it on today, doesn't mean you have to use it. But you in theory do have, based on this product type, the ability to. So this I assume runs on the
I think it'd be there at, at completion. It, it should be accessible.
Yeah, cuz the way that at least this product looks like it's laid out, I was thumbing through the specifications, it runs on, um, similar to like a Z-Wave, which is like a home automation standard that we, you see a lot nowadays, which is where if there's she's here alone and she wants to have a set of lights that turn on that might not be a standard set of lights, she could set them on, they could stay on for a minute as she goes outside, and then they all shut back off, that kinda thing. That's what these products have set up in them right now, so you're not running around hitting light switches as you're leaving a building.
Well, they're all motion centered, censored lights switches anyway, aren't they? Cuz that's what's required in this state for code.
Is that true?
These aren't.
Well, uh, so this, the, my buil- this my building.
Yeah.
Where you walk into the transfer station, as you start walking, they start turning on.
They start running on, yeah.
They're cool, and the more they see you moving around in there, they all stay on. And then you leave in a certain while later.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in this state, they have to be motion censored.
These aren't.
That's because we haven't
We're grandbabies.
Building.
These here or these here?
These here.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a fairly new code.
Yes.
Okay, so that's new code.
Yes.
I just did it cuz it was cool.
Yeah, see, I did this, I did the same thing at my house, cuz I don't like having to find light switches in the dark. I like to be able to walk or drive in, and as I'm walking or driving in with whatever, it just starts turning on.
No, it's code in this state, in a commercial building.
Turned me on to it, I didn't even know about it, so.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, if, if we look at it, and we figure out how the drop
It should be ready to rock and roll and utilized.
Yep.
Yeah, cuz
And the exterior lights I hope stay on for, for security purposes. I don't want that building dark. The building up there has a light on all the time, this building has a light on, I don't want that dark.
With LEDs, you can have.
Right.
Yeah.
And they can, they can be set up to come on at dusk and go off at dawn.
That's fine, but I do want them on.
But yeah.
Rooftop ones supposed to be on all the time?
Yep.
I never noticed that.
Yeah, cuz I was just looking at the RPODBA, this is on page one, two.
You, you don't have to tell us, cuz we don't know what that means.
Well, it's on the, it's on the fourth page of the packet here, and if you see the little wifi symbol next to it, it's using, it's not on your wifi, it uses a different setup, but no, if you're gonna do it, do it once, do it right and be
Okay.
Out of it.
About the only room, and might correct me if I'm wrong, that's gonna have a switch, is mechanical.
Yes.
Right. Everything else would be
Optic sensors.
So that what the energy code is, is automatic on and off.
Yep.
For always in bathrooms.
Yep.
If it's a, uh, private office or a storage room, it's manual on and auto off, or you can have it set with these systems to go auto on to fifty percent and then manually up and down. And then in the, in a town hall like this would be more like that manual on, so the lights don't necessarily turn on. That's one thing different with code is, if you want the lights to turn on automatically, if it's not a bathroom or a hallway, it can only turn on to fifty percent, and then you can ramp it up and down. The controls that you mentioned with this feature would be above and beyond code minimum. So that's, it doesn't mean be do or adult to it, just that's where the code is.
Okay.
But rooms such as this bulletin staff, I want to be able to walk in there and the light goes on.
Then it would go on to fifty percent.
Why can't it go at as a hundred?
Code?
Code, an energy code.
The ones in the Hudson go on a hundred percent.
Welcome to the town of San Antonio.
I know, but they're not that old, that's why I'm asking that.
And they change, and the electric should change.
That could be too. There, most of these have the capability to, with the dip switches, you can switch them. So.
So after we're inspected, we can.
So what you're requiring us to do in all these offices is that they come on fifty percent and we have to manually turn them up to a hundred?
Right.
That's ridiculous.
No, that's energy efficient.
You just need to know the game.
Yeah.
Just need to know the rules and then.
Yeah, but you can turn it up and down on a switch anyway.
Lot of people before their office lights totally be at fifty percent. So when you walk in, that's all the light you need.
That's all it is.
Your desk, there, there's enough.
Okay.
Illumination to be able to see your.
You got a lot of windows in there too, I don't think you're gonna have any light issues.
All right, I'm okay with that. I'm okay.
So you push the button and it turns on to a hundred percent.
Yeah, got it, okay.
And I know how much Sunnylink's gonna love me having to say internet of things on the new town board building.
Alright.
There's one more thing I wanted to.
Yes.
I love it, yeah.
In the bathrooms, yes, go ahead.
So I was thinking in the bathrooms, a lot of times what I'll recommend is a one by four version of the two by fours. So a narrow light above the salves.
One by, say that again.
So a narrow version of.
These.
These, or of.
Okay.
Or of these. The, the reflected ones.
Cause right now you have cans in here, isn't that what I see?
I would keep those cans. And if we only have cans, then it can get dark in the salves.
Yes.
Shut the door.
Yes.
So the, the solution for that is you put one by fours above the salves, uh, up against the wall. And then that lights the salves and lights the sink.
Why don't you just forget the cans and just put one by fours right across the whole?
We can do that.
That's what I was wondering, I was.
Why are we, I, I don't like, I don't like the cans.
Okay.
I think, I think two by twos.
I think so too.
Cancel, lights the bathroom a little bit. Cause if, if you put the lights like against the wall, then you're, what you're doing is you're lighting one side or the other. So I guess we, we, we can look at the full metrics.
Look at the metrics, cause I, I agree with him, I want two by twos right down the center.
Your bathrooms aren't that big and it's, they're not in there to study, they're, you know.
Cause they're one, two, three, four, five and a half feet.
Yeah, so.
One by twos right down the middle.
That's what I think, right down the middle.
Right, yeah.
I don't like the cans personally, I can see the need for them in the outdoor bathrooms, I understand that, but, okay. Anything else on this for lighting?
One by two sound, you know, the other thing was.
Actually, if they're easier to take care of, I, I'd put one by twos in.
Or two by twos, whatever you guys decide.
I'd put those strip things in the outside ones too, if they're easier to, if you don't, and then you don't have to mess around with the cans.
But if cans are recessed, the strips won't be, cause that's, that is, um.
Right, we're doing.
Yeah, but for the outside, it wouldn't matter either.
Two restrooms outside, we're doing an eight foot gripboard ceiling.
Oh, you are, okay.
So we'll have a hard ceiling in there, I, I don't want kids in there squirming behind the ceiling tiles.
Yeah. Cause they're gonna be a concrete wall exterior into the town hall there. So when you're in those two restrooms, you're not gonna be able to get into the town hall.
Yeah, that's the way it should be.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to bust through the ceiling at eight feet and then you'd have to bust through the sheet rock at twelve feet to get it into the attic space, um, to be able to get somewhere else. So we're got the six inch concrete block on the interior between the town hall space and the, the two bathrooms.
Is it terminated at the ceiling height then?
That goes up to the underside of the roof truss.
Twelve, yeah.
Goes up to twelve feet.
Twelve feet. And then it'll have sheet rock on the town hall side on top of that.
Got that, got that fur down with, with studs and sheet rocks so we can get conduit and.
Whatever you need.
Into those spaces as well.
Okay.
Last question in the bathroom is vanity lights, we're not showing any vanity lights, lights up wall mounted on the mirror or.
They can put their makeup on at home.
Yeah, I'm with her.
That's what I said, this isn't a party room or this isn't a, no.
We don't have them in there, we just have them in the ceiling, no, no.
However you look when you get here is how you're gonna look when you leave.
How, how are we heating those bathrooms if they're?
Right through the ceiling they'll come.
Supply diffusers in the ceiling.
No.
Oh, I'm fixing things up this time.
Well, we have to have outside restrooms because you have a November election. We've gotten satellites from you, now we don't have to have satellites with these. So on November elections, these will be open, I'm sorry to take the money out of your pocket.
No, you're teaching me, I don't care.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess, uh, you can just, how are we, he just came through electric?
No.
Um, I'll, I'll work this with, with mechanical and with Mike, it might make sense to just put in some electric baseboard.
Yeah, I would just do that.
That's, yeah, I was.
For, most of the winter, they're gonna be closed and locked when the, when the.
Right.
He has a point for November.
Yeah, after the election, shut it down.
We would set up those bathrooms to be able to be winterized.
Yes.
Yep, without a doubt.
Mm-hmm.
So you can, you can blow them out, turn the water off.
Yep.
Bring down the sink, bring down the toilet, pour in the R and D antifreeze in there to keep it from freezing up.
Seizing, yeah.
And, and then we just provide, uh, some baseboard, electric baseboard in there for when you're doing elections, just so it's a, if you got a cold November, you know.
Right, and we've had Novembers that have been great and we've had Novembers that are freezing. So that's why, if we're building these restaurants, I want to be able to use them for elections.
Yeah, and I.
And if April elects, those spring ones can be, February, they can be pretty cold.
Uh, February is another one that's always cold.
We might, February when we still might need porta potties.
So you get two twenty going out there then for that or?
You'll have to.
Yep.
Okay.
So we have heat lights, water.
Tim is trying to get some work done here online, is there anything we need him for that I, that we need to keep him on with us? And I can let him go.
Yep, so we'll send him the, uh.
Just put it closer to your mouth.
Send him the set of plans so he can be looking at the cameras.
And I'll send him his info, so Tim, we're gonna send you an email with a set of plans and some information that you can provide back to Bruce.
Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, that's so good, it's been, been fun having you shadow me on three service calls.
I know, I've been watching you, don't worry, I've been watching you.
Did you send him this as well?
Make it up in the long run.
Thank you.
Anything from anyone else for Tim, otherwise we'll let him go. Tim, thanks for joining us, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate you, thanks.
Bye. Okay. Matt, you're online, is there anything you wanted to ask, you've been a little quiet tonight, but let me know if there's anything you wanna know that you didn't get information on.
No, uh, um, I, I don't have any techs- technical expertise in these areas, so I'm trusting the experts, uh, to deliver that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else Bruce that you wanna bring up?
Um, I, well, I guess on, uh, A two oh one, I did make a.
Some changes, yep. The window changes and then you took off all the wainscoting around the building on the next sheet.
Basically on the, the north windows, we added a transom. Glass.
Just to give it a cleaner look, yeah, cleaner look.
It does look nice, doesn't it?
Then she brought up some parking on this west side, and you stated that you needed forty feet. We still require, we would be required to put ballards up there anyway to keep people backing into the building too, wouldn't we?
Yep, would be a good idea.
Yeah. So when are you gonna know how this is gonna fit out here?
Uh, that's, I, I need to get together with Kelly, uh, next week.
Okay.
And start working on exactly where we're gonna place the building and figure out if we have any room to, to do parking on the west side.
Alright, and since we can move this building all the way back to the Knowles Nelson Grant land, maybe we can get another row of parking in the front, I don't know, maybe not.
Are you gonna have Doug come out and do locates on?
No, he's, uh, they've already got, they've already got the survey done on that line, Stantec does. They did it as part of the park project, I've already talked to Lee and Bruce verified. The only thing that's not done is the delineation of the wetland between the wetland itself and what is considered not wetland, which they're gonna get done.
Right.
So.
I'm thinking you're pretty good, cause that wetland actually kind of, kind of shifts south.
Shifts away.
But, but we still need to be able to, we need to have a stormwater plan and, and use that wetland for that.
Well, he's gonna have to do that, yeah.
Yeah, um, the question I had is for the, um, drainage field and septic tank?
They're that way.
Okay, so we can keep going basically south. Okay.
Yeah. The other thing I was gonna bring up is, are you including as part of the cost of this project? Cause we're gonna have Todd Tuma cut these trees down, or do you prefer to do it as part of the project?
We should.
That would be entirely up to you.
We should use our own contract people for that, I would.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, is I'm gonna have him start cutting trees, at least that line of them.
Didn't we just assign one supervisor to go try and find a tree service?
Yeah, he can take these down, cause they're small enough, it's under his contract.
No, let's, let's.
We can't take, we cannot take the small trees away from him, that's under his contract.
Okay.
The tree service that he and I are talking about are these monsters.
Oh, okay.
Except let's, if we don't have to, you've got a na- a native oak and you've got two native.
We're just talking about this line over here.
Yeah, on the west.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only line he's taken out.
Yep, and that on the corner is a native oak that was a volunteer, but it's two spruce on either side. And you've got a couple of good maples that are actually natives, they're not junker made of maples.
Well, you should go out, you should go out and tag what you wanna save then, cause.
There are some, um, I think, I, we have some ash out there that looked, had signs of borer anyway, so they.
It's gone, the, all the ash here.
They're gonna go.
Yeah, they're done. There's not an ash in this county that anyone's gonna save.
And your little, some of your little, I'd have to go out there, you want me to mark those scrubby pines and stuff too?
No, I just want you to mark whatever, one or two trees you wanna try to keep that are oak or whatever. I'll tell you this, anything that's oak, you're not gonna save with the excavating anyway.
That, that's little enough, I think we can.
Well, take them then.
Because it's a nice oak, it's a pretty good size, you're, it, it's a thousand dollar tree to replace.
Well, put some tape on and we'll see.
If they're, they're small enough, you know, we could, we could certainly include in the contract.
Move them.
Well, then it'll probably die.
Yeah, that, I'm not spending, I'm not spending a thousand dollars.
By the time you spit, go back and over, I think you're gonna miss what I'm concerned about, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Um, for the runoff then, for this parking lot conversation, where's that water runoff supposed to go for springtime?
It's all going to that west, southwest.
Yeah.
So all the salt and junk we're gonna pour in there is.
It shouldn't be, that's mostly.
Right now it's where it's going.
Yeah, just making sure we don't cause ourselves any trouble with getting close to that Knowles Nelson or anything else.
No, it should be all, it should all be clean, because it's all coming off the, the roof.
Right, so I would.
He's talking about the parking lot.
Should be going s- pretty much straight west.
Which is what it does now, it goes right here to the south. Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We need to keep that in mind though.
Um, anything else that you guys wanted to bring up to us tonight? Are we on track here, you feeling good?
I, I have something that I should have thought of.
Okay.
For the AV equipment.
Yes.
Um, that cable management will have to, are we gonna have the vendor who did this?
Yes.
So they're gonna be competing at the same time that probably Sunnylink is trying to do all of his drops in as well?
I haven't verified that with them yet, I'm gonna have a, a third conversation with them, because we needed to get this far for me to be able to have that conversation.
Okay.
So that's why this is important tonight and I will get in touch with them.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, I'm just gonna make a motion on this, just so that we're all on the same page of the book, that, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we go forward with all of the changes that we implemented that are showing on here and what you added tonight. Is a second.
Can I add that we also share the documentation with Sunnylink for all the things that we've.
She's got that on already.
Okay, I didn't know if we had to include it in motion.
I'm not gonna worry about it.
So to be very specific, it's the mechanicals we, we discussed, the sidewalks going around the building and the, um, the front entrance overhang part on what that's gonna look.
Windows, cause he's taking the rock off now around the building, better, what's in this plan.
I'm not okay with just doing, giving you a flat, everything on the plan is fine, I'd be.
Totally, the one clarification that I want to make is, you want the sidewalk over here to go up five feet?
Yep.
Okay. And you need for this to be more than four here?
Well, here's the thing, how, how wide do you need that sidewalk for ADA, you need it at least five or six feet.
And by the time, and.
Four.
It's just four.
Yep, cause basically, you know, the sidewalk is, is four feet, cause that's all we come out on our current standard stoop, we come off four feet from the building, which allows for a three foot door to swing and still be swinging over the stoop that's on frost weddings.
So how do you take a wheelchair outlet?
I don't, I don't have my teeth measure.
No, this is the one you have to go after, not that, that's not ADA.
I'm just.
I understood that ADA had to have six feet outside the door.
Oh, for the bubble to turn the wheelchair?
For the turn the wheelchair.
I was gonna see how wide, just for a visual, if that was flat out there, because.
So can you please check on that, because I'm pretty sure Wisconsin requires that now on their elections, and I'll try to look it up for you.
Okay.
Yeah, he's got that.
Because this is, if you were coming in the door.
Right.
It would have to be wide. This is exit only.
Right, but the exit from the voting area is what I'm most concerned with.
But that, that's only measured inside.
No, cause it's a push door.
Right, but the, the door is opening.
Oh, it's pushing this way?
Yeah, it's outward.
So the door is not swinging.
On top of them, okay, I agree.
Cause you'd go out and hang a lift.
If, if this door was swinging in the other direction, then you had to go around it.
Okay.
Now your sidewalk doesn't need to be.
And what about the entrances to those restrooms, don't, I wanna make, if that sidewalk has to be six feet, I don't care, just so it's right. Cause I'll tell you this, the city of Hudson got dinged on that brand new fire hall on the last election. They got dinged because someone did not put the right sized sidewalk in that, around that building.
And the, these two restrooms, the doors will get, so.
Right, but I'm just still, I, I just to let you know Bruce, that they got dinged on a brand new building, and I was like, are you kidding me?
The restroom doors swing in?
Yes, oh yeah.
Yeah, that's how they're marked on the drawings.
Yeah, I know that's how they're marked, but I'm questioning whether they should be out swing doors too.
No, you wouldn't want that for security.
The wind would catch them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd be passing, running around.
For mechanical, I, I, did we ever get to HVAC? What we're doing, I had asked, I think I've asked like every.
Go back to the sidewalks, so it won't take that long. It won't take that long. What are you? What are the sidewalks on that east side by your bathroom?
I said they had to be five feet, but they might have to be six.
Right now, I'm showing four feet.
He's showing four.
Four's not enough.
If we want to come.
I think it had to be. I think you put six feet around the whole building.
I don't think you're saving enough money by having the discussion much longer.
That's what I was trying to get you to, that bit, we're arguing about a foot.
Six foot all the way around the building, gives plenty of room for people to stand next to each other. And I don't have to worry about ADA.
The only difference is, is the foot of concrete that we're gonna put around it, the, the framing, the, everything else is the same.
Yes. So get it out there.
Right now, what. What we're showing is sidewalk.
Yes. Is there.
Right here and then that basically comes to right here, so whether we make this six feet or we make it eight feet.
Six feet I'm fine with.
We can, we can.
And swing it around both sides.
We can make that.
Do you wanna keep it straight going across the front, or do you want it to follow the configuration of the front of the building?
No, I want it straight. I think that's easier for people to stand on.
And then the plan, the plan will be, you know, we've basically got. Uh, entrance here. And then basically the, the rock mulch.
Yep, all the way around.
Pretty much.
The rock, the rock mulch is gonna meet the sidewalk, Bruce.
Is that, is the mulch up, is the rock up against the building and the sidewalk, or is it on the sidewalk?
Between, it's between the building and the front sidewalk.
So you're gonna do, this whole thing is rock?
Yes.
Oh, I thought that was gonna be where you're gonna have people standing.
No, the sidewalk is out further. See, you just drew it.
So, so.
This is a sidewalk right there.
Sidewalk, parking lot is right here.
Oh, I, I, I got you now.
And it's all in the, the sidewalk basically will come up.
Okay, and then put little rock marks in that.
Yeah, you have to have a little rock alongside the building.
There's your rock marks.
No, but on your east, on your west side and your, your west side has to have a little rock along that building so that we don't have them falling into it.
Your west side, I would think you'd want just.
Like this much rock, a foot. On the west side.
Between the building and the sidewalk?
Yeah. The other side you can't cuz of the bathrooms. The other side you can't cuz of the bathrooms, but.
Yeah, on the east and west sides, I have run both of the sidewalks right up against the building.
Okay.
So then this sidewalk.
Keep your rock in the front and, yep, so it's nice and smooth and they can.
But I will check on that to make sure because I just don't want us to be caught flat footed like the city did.
And the only other question I had was, okay, uh first I'll, I'll keep back to my HVAC question.
Yep.
So did we have? We're agreeing to mechanical, but I don't think we've actually agreed to mechanical yet.
I thought we were agreed, the mechanical's not really.
Here is looking at the air source heat pump.
Yep.
Compared to. Force air.
This was electrical and plumbing. This was not HVAC in this plan.
You had said mechanical in your motion?
I know, I will change that to say the other.
Okay, and then the only other thing is on this building, I didn't see where any of the. Uh, we had at one point talked about water for the outside for fire.
That hasn't been decided yet, has it?
That's part of this, it should be.
Okay.